Six D is being removed from the agenda.
Six what?
Seventeen is being removed from the agenda. We are going to do recognition and the school restructuring plan before public comment. Again, if you have a public comment, we're going to ask that you please fill out a form at the table and make sure that it is by accuracy. Okay, I need your motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Dean has made motion, Mr. Daniel Second. Is there any discussion? Roll call for him.
Yes, motion here.
Okay, we give patience for more recognition. We would like to take this opportunity to recognize our Round Lake High School speaking of the month. Allison Worth and Allison, you can come forward.
Allison's going to share an essay that she has written about volunteerism and Allison is first replacing in class, Allison. She is number five in her class and her GPA is 4.3. And so we are here to follow her. Allison has written an essay on volunteerism that she's going to share with us at this time.
A volunteer is a person who uses up their time in order to help others for other big tasks. People can volunteer on a day when children are very healthy. For young people and teenagers, volunteering shows them at a young age how to follow directions, how to be responsible, how to set up examples for others, and also how to influence the people around them. All of these things can help them in the future when they find what they want to do with their lives and find a meaningful job. By giving up their time and effort, people also contribute to our community. Some people volunteer because it makes them feel better about themselves, while some people volunteer for a reason that makes them feel better. Giving to those who are less fortunate is something everyone should do at some point in their life. Volunteering really shows people how to care about others. The more people that volunteer, the better off the community and possibly the world will be. For me, I volunteer because I enjoy it. I like knowing that by giving up my own time to help out, I help others as well. I have been volunteering for different events ever since I was young. My parents have always been very involved in the community and seeing that made me want to volunteer as well. I saw how my time can make a big impact in another person's life. One of the first things I remember volunteering with was dance. Being a dancer at the Round Lake Heart District since I was three, I saw how important teaching assistance was to keep the classroom moving. When I was old enough, I gave up my time and volunteered as an assistant. The children loved me and they looked up to me. By being there and helping them learn to dance, I made an impact on them. I like to believe that because of me and showing them my passion for dance, several close children made the decision to continue with their dance career. As I became older and more responsible, I started to volunteer with the dance recital. My mom had been volunteering at the recital for years and I wanted to follow in her footsteps. I collected tickets, brought the children backstage, and wasn't blocking the door. By volunteering at this event, I gave back to the dance program, which had supported me all year by giving them my time. It's helped me become more responsible and showed me that giving back helps everyone. I also helped out with my church with making a life school. At first, I was a crew leader in charge of field stewardess. Then after a few years, I became a senior crew leader in charge of five crew leaders and their stewardess. This was because the crew leaders were close to my age and did not always want to listen to me. However, this whole experience made me a lot more responsible and showed me how to be in charge of multiple people, which could help me in the future when I get a job. The last two years, my parents have been in charge of the athletic coordinators of the high school. My dad is the president and my mom is in charge of the concession stand. Both my parents volunteer their time at the concession stand almost every week. When they started to work fast for all concessions last winter, they were fooding me to help out. From the first time I helped out, I loved it and I volunteered whenever I could. This experience helped me find a job this summer and I put the skills I learned to use in my job. This year, I learned what I've used over the summer to help everyone with the concession stands. I like being able to pass on my knowledge to help others do better in what they were doing. Volunteering is a huge part of my life and it has changed me into the person I am today. If more young children and teenagers would volunteer their time just a little bit, they would see how rewarding volunteering can be. People my age are always being asked what we want to do with our lives. Most of the time, however, we do not know the answer to that question. We can use volunteering to find what we enjoy, what we are good at, and what we don't like. Being a volunteer also helps young people gain traits that are highly regarded in the professional world, such as responsibility, perseverance, and good business. No matter how you look at it, volunteering always better than sports guys. People help the community and those that are less fortunate. The volunteers gain lessons and traits that will save us so much.
Allison, when we're here from the district, we'd like to present you with this outstanding achievement award presented to Allison Worth, Youth of the Month, January 2013, and it's signed by the award president Nancy Bradford and myself. We are very proud of you. Thank you for all of your hard work. Can you roll out for your peers and show them how important volunteering is? Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to move on to the presentation of the school restructuring plan.
I would like to thank everyone for being here this evening. We have had a busy few weeks and we appreciate their taking time out of their busy schedule and joining us this evening to hear what our recognition is. In addition to thanking you for your attendance at today's meeting, as I reflect on when the topic of restructuring was introduced to our board, our staff, and our community, I share your concern that too much time lapsed from the moment we became aware of the need to restructure and the moment when it was shared with you, our stakeholders. This should not have occurred. Our stakeholders, including the Board of Education, should have been included as a part of the conversation much earlier in that process. As we move forward with this project and with other initiatives which have a profound impact on our children and community, we have developed a communication plan which includes a tight timeline for communication of projects of this magnitude. I understand that from the moment of notification of a need for bold change, that the clock is ticking and the flow of communication must begin immediately upon receipt of that information. Thank you for your input over the last few weeks, for your concern, and for holding us to high levels of communication as we endeavor to provide a quality education for the students of Round Lake District 116. And I would like now to start with our presentation. We want to take a moment to share with you the actions that have been taken tied to best practices and research within the district. You can see that our Board of Education has participated in what we call the TAG program, turning achievement through governance. This is not something they had to do, but because they are concerned about the achievement of our students, then they have voluntarily enrolled in a two-year training focused on student achievement. All staff have been engaged in data dialogues during school improvement days. So we have a number of those during the day and we have been looking closely at our data regarding student achievement to see how our children are doing and seeing what strategies we need to put in place to help them move forward. There has been a principal mentoring program established through the Consortium for Educational Change and we have had mentors who have worked with our new principals to assist them in making a transition into leadership here within the district. We have had a reorganization of district and building level administration. The administrators have spent time studying books on leadership and we have also implemented site-based management strategies. Many of the strategies that have been implemented within the district prior to this time were at the district level and so now we have gone through training on site-based management and really put a lot of the leadership of the initiatives there with the builders. We have conducted a comprehensive needs assessment. We knew that there were a number of areas where we needed to improve. So therefore, we had a district-wide needs assessment which was focused on student achievement so that we could really know where is it that we're strong in and what are the areas where we need to improve. And as we take a look at how we put together our work moving forward, some of it will come from this particular document which was done last year. We're moving to the Rising Star Program, which is the school and district improvement plan. Every district that is not performing at high levels of student achievement are required to go through the Rising Star Plan. So we began that work and we have a representative from the state who works at the Regional Office of Education who meets with us on a weekly basis to review the progress that we're making in the area of student achievement. And also to help us identify target areas for improvement. We have conducted an analysis of multiple sources of data and you see all of the testing that our students do that we really take a look at that and we say, how are children doing, where progress are they making, and where do we need to improve. And we have also implemented response to intervention and PPIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, which takes a look at the climate as well as the RTI, seeing that what is the best should be in place for all children across the district and those children who may be struggling in various areas, what interventions should be put in place for them. The communications since January 14th, 2013, board meeting. We've had district administrator meetings, elementary administrator staff parent work session, middle high school meetings, parent information meetings. Bilingual parent advisory committee meeting took place at Avon Township and meetings with the Education Association of Round Lake Leadership, superintendent's cabinet meetings. The presentation was placed on the website January 25th with a recommendation to the board tonight, January 28th. And then we will follow with a community forum which will be scheduled on February 11th rather than February 13th because it is Ash Wednesday. Restructuring options. As we shared with you before, there are five restructuring options. The first, the state takeover, reopening as charter schools, contract with an outside entity, replace all or no staff, and major restructuring of the school's governance. And we had an opportunity to hear from our parents who were in attendance at the community meetings as well as from our staff on these areas. Other major restructuring of the school governance, which initially we were calling either no movement or no change, but all of these involve change. So really the term "no change" was a misnomer and it meant no movement of staff, but it did mean the change was going to take place. When we take a look at major restructuring of school governance, we asked the staff and the parents about half-day versus what we presently have, which is extended day kindergarten. Sometimes referred to as full day, but it's really an extended day. We asked about the grade level center concept. There were two models that were presented. The first model was kindergarten, then first and second in a building together, third and fourth together, and fifth as a standalone building. We also had a second model which had kindergarten stand along, first and second together, and third through fifth together. This particular model, it was only possible with the half-day kindergartens because we needed the space in order to be able to put a third through fifth grade configuration together. The theme schools, that information was also shared and we asked for input regarding that. STEM, which is the science, technology, engineering, and math, and also fine arts. And here again, the schools that the students would go to would be based on student interest and parent choice. The school governance model is the model with no movement of students or the staff. When we take a look at the options, the responses from parents, I'm in the area of the first four areas that were listed regarding state takeover, reopening as charter school, contract with an outside entity, and replace all or no staff. I want to say that these numbers, they're numbers, they're not percents because what we found in these areas as well as the other area which has to do with the change in the governance, people checked more than one area. So some of these were repeated and it may be that someone checked all four areas plus an area in the change of governance and in some instances, people checked two or three. So therefore, what we showed here is just the number of checks that were placed in each of these areas. And you can see here as far as the parents and community, there were 186 who responded. And of those 186, this is what the responses looked like. And then the staff, there were 82 of 160 responded in these particular areas and the responses are listed there in the status at the bottom. Most of the respondents said there's more than one option on this and the options that are listed on the following slide. So these are not pure numbers, but they represent a number of responses. Major restructuring options, the responses from the parents, community, and the staff. With the parents and community, there were 186 respondents. When asked the question, should the district continue to offer extended day kindergarten? This was not on the exit survey that the parents completed, however, we do have a list of all the responses and the conversations from the parents and the community. And overwhelmingly, the parents indicated that they were in favor of the extended day versus the half-day. And as we said, if we moved or did not consider the half-day, then one of the options would have to be eliminated connected through the space. With the staff, 55.3% of the staff indicated that they prefer the extended day over the half-day as an option for our children. You can see where the percents fell for the other areas, the theme schools, grade level centers, and school governance, no movement. And you can see that the theme schools for the staff was 25.5%. And some respondents here again, as we said, in these areas selected more than one option. So this was not a pure number. And you can see where the parent response was for the theme schools and the grade level centers. The staff had the highest percentage for the grade level centers and then the staff and the parents improved somehow in their percents for the school governance, no movement. Restructuring options were then narrowed to two. Those two were the grade level centers, model one, because as we said before, model two, and actually we had to have the half-day kindergarten. And then the school governance, which included two, no movement. And I'm going to ask Veronica to come at this time and we'll talk about, well, let's see, I'm here covering this part. Tell me when I am supposed to switch over. Okay. Grade level centers option. When we went to the two options, we asked the question and we wanted to take a further look at the research as well as the cost of the options. So the grade level center research, and there's an article which is cited at the bottom, which is current status of grade level centers. If you look at the packet online, you will even click on that, read that article, and it had at least one page, if not more, of bibliography where there were plenty of articles that talked about grade level centers. This particular article was written about grade level centers in the state of Illinois. And we also looked at other articles about grade level centers nationwide. But this article indicated that at least eight districts in Illinois have grade level centers, that there is very little empirical research on the effect of grade span configuration. We wanted to keep in mind that our first priority was to raise student achievement. And whatever it is that we put in place, we need to know that there was at least research that would indicate that we would be able to have some measure of success in moving in that area. Student achievement is generally not a primary criterion in the decision to change configurations. Many times when districts have moved to grade level centers, it's been because of space or the way that they have built their buildings, but it was not for the purpose of raising student achievement. Academic improvement is generally a secondary concern. We know for us, academic achievement or academic improvement is a primary concern. Grade configuration viewed against other influential factors on student learning was not a statistically significant predictor of student academic success. So those are some of the phrases that were pulled out of that article and the other information in the article supports that. We also wanted to look at cost. We are a district that is very sensitive to the cost of the work that we do and we want to be sure and take a look to understand what the costs are associated with any movement. The grade level center option cost, you can see that transportation would require the addition of buses, drivers, and fuel, facilities with the movement of classrooms and staff movement, the cost is missed affair, information technology, the additional educational materials, including software licenses and equipment for new staff, human resources, we would have to add additional staff for collaboration, plus one special education and one speech and language pathologist. And you can see what the total estimated cost for the grade level center option is, $861,800.
When you say $212,000 for fuel, is that above what we're paying today?
What is listed here, and I'll answer, well, you know, basically I want to do the presentation, but the costs that were listed there were for drivers, buses, and fuel. And this is above what we presently have. This would be the additional cost. Everything that was listed on this slide would be the additional cost of the grade level centers. School governance option definition, what does the research tell us and what is the cost? To align, school governance definition, as defined in the Illinois State Board of Education's School Restructuring Guidance Document, is the alignment of the school with an existing research-based school improvement model of sufficient size and scope such that the model used as prescribed and intended can affect needed change. And we know that the change that we are seeking is an increase in student achievement. So therefore, as we move forward, we know that those pieces must be in place. School governance research says that it's about giving teachers the resources they need, like data systems to track student progress in a culture of continuous improvement. It's also an extended learning goal which includes successful after-school programs. It's also what a community can do to support the school's efforts and what the school must do to meet the community needs. And as I had an opportunity to meet with our community groups as well as with our parents and community, the questions have been not only what we as a school district need to do, but also what do parents need to do and how can they contribute? And finally, what does the community, the larger or greater community of Round Lake District 116 and the five villages that we serve, need to do to support the schools? So all of those become questions as we move forward that we want to see, that we're addressing all of those areas. Studies of high-performing schools, where all students learn more than similar students in other schools, show common design elements. These elements are comprehensive, affecting the whole school, and include the following. Here again, this is from School Restructuring: What Works When, and it's a guide for education leaders. So the documents that we are signing as well as what we know about research and best practices is guiding the compilation and the work that we're pulling together to put this plan together.
Good evening. So going a little bit deeper into the research, when we look at the quote before regarding what highly effective schools do, there are about eight things that come, that rise to the top. One is communicating a clear mission, guiding daily activities, high, unyielding expectations that often is to learn through an aligned, viable curriculum, frequent monitoring of student progress, responsive approaches to restructuring students, uninterrupted and adequate time on core subjects, safe and orderly environments, school-home connection, and strong leadership and management practices. And so the next few slides, we are going to go through some of the components that I just described for you in the A. Some of the things that we talked about regarding a clear mission and guiding daily activities, we're talking about what are the things that across the district we should be looking at on a daily basis that young kids student learn? Common schedules, bell-to-bell structured activities, and in bell-to-bell structured activities, what that means is from the time a student enters the classroom until the end of either, you know, a content area lesson, whether you're learning science or social studies, what are the key things that should happen at the very beginning of that lesson as well as towards the end of that lesson? Teacher collaboration. It is important that through professional learning communities, teachers are able to discuss the curriculum that needs to be taught as well as how they're going to teach it and how they're going to assess whether or not students learn what was taught, followed by what are the strategies that need to be in place for when students aren't learning it at the pace anticipated? And so what are the next steps? What is that going to be? So those would be some of the things that would happen during that teacher collaboration time. It's not just a time that teachers are gathering together to just talk, but they're really looking at what it is they need to teach, how they're going to teach it, how they're going to know where not students learn it, and then how they will respond when students didn't get it or didn't get it. Student goal setting is a big part of that. Students need to be highly engaged in understanding what they're learning, why they're learning it, why is it relevant, why is it important to me, the student that I'm learning it? How am I going to use this later in life or how does it connect to other subject areas that I'm anticipating? The next one is high, unyielding expectations that often is to learn through an aligned, viable curriculum. We are responsible for implementing the Illinois Learning Standards, which are aligned with Common Core, and that is our curriculum. And then what happens, the next step of what happens is districts break that down into determining what actually must be taught, how that must be taught. Because if you're doing really well in a particular area, you may need to spend time on it, but you may need to spend that time differently based on another area where we may not have performed as well. So that's how the one piece works. We know that we have got to nail core instruction and that's for every kid. We know that our AYP score is put to us in the form of our performance in literacy and in math. Literacy, reading, writing, all of those things are required for every subject area. And so we know that we've got to put a lot of emphasis in that area pretty heavily as well. When we talk about redesigning special education services to focus on Common Core as well as ELL, the first myth that I want to dispel is that we're not saying that our English language learners and our special ed student population are a problem. And I'm saying it like that because I've heard it come to me in many ways through parents, through staff. So I want to make that very clear. We do have students that are learning English as a second language. No matter when you enter the country, at some point you're going to have to take the Illinois State assessment. the Illinois State assessment. Generally, I believe it's that one year that they kind of have a waiver. Otherwise, at third grade and above, the one that test is given, students are expected to take that assessment and they're expected to take it in English. There's not a Spanish version. So again, we've got to make sure that materials and tools that we're using are materials and tools that are research-based for all students. Students identified as in need of services for special education. And there's a range of needs there. We have some students who receive services for just speech, which could mean articulation, but it could also mean language, which is a little bit more complex, a little more complex need. And so, or emotional impairment, or you know, there's a long list, autism. There's a long list. And so the purpose of special education services is to assist students with supplemental services because they're already struggling with the core. So I want to make sure that we look clear about that. We would expect that our students with disabilities are performing a little bit lower than other students. However, we still expect that those students are growing as those services are delivered and that we are making game and that we are progressing in those subject areas. In addition to this, there are some subjects we haven't listed here. There are significant gaps between our ethnic groups. And again, that viable curriculum that is culturally and socially responsive, recognizing the students that we serve, and again, making sure that we've got materials and resources and strategies in place that connect those students to the curriculum. Frequent monitoring of progress, implementing a full responsive intervention program. Yes, we have been working through RTI. I believe the law was in place effective two thousand six maybe? Were we required to implement it? However, any research on implementing new practices, you find out it takes a solid three to five years doing everything perfectly in order to get it as a part of your culture and what you do every day and moving well. And we know that with the lack of common alignment, the lack of common resources, we don't have that solid core that we need for every student to engage in and then working into that next level. We've got a lot of interventions, a lot of supplemental things for students who are not making it. Some things in place for students who are doing quite well. However, we've got to have a solid core, a foundation on which to build first. Implement a continuum of enrichment activities and services in each school. Again, depending on where you go and how creative and resourceful those building teams have been, is the degree to which you may see, you know, some resources are pretty powerful and looking pretty great and people have figured out how to plan and schedule things. And in others, it may be a little different. So again, our goal is to have common standardized foundation that when we say Round Lake, you know that these are things that are happening in every room. Frequent monitoring of student progress. You've probably heard the name for what gets monitored, gets done. We've got to look at how well students are doing today, how well they did last week, and how well that compares to how they did last month. We do have in our buildings data dashboards where teachers and principals are collecting multiple sources of data to determine whether or not the strategies they're using are working. We've got to be more prescribed, more definitive and more aligned between buildings on what areas. Implement governance meetings, again, within the governance structure, which sounds a little vague upfront, but we have to build it out. It's not something that comes packaged. You really have to look at your community, your resources that you currently have, and the capacity of staff to lead it as well as implement it. With the governance meetings, with teaching and learning, building levels that have grade level teams, that is a one. It gives the district an opportunity to see what additional support we may need to provide to the building through the building leadership. And then two, it lets us see what's happening among and between grade levels across the district in terms of implementation. And then three, it is accountability for all. And I like to say it's a cycle of accountability. It's accountability of does, you know, are these things in place in the magic? Is the building leader moving these things through the structure of the school as they should be? And then is the classroom teacher effectively moving students from one level to the next? And we're proposing that that would happen four to five times per year. Again, the structure of that, we would need to build out after we have an approval of which option we're going to move with. And we'll be working with building principals to build it out and have more information again for the forum. And then finally, we'll have a proposal together around book governance structure for the board by the end of February. Implement the use of a data warehouse. Again, right now, we have to give our teachers and our principals a lot of credit as well as teaching and learning staff because right now our data crunching is very labor-intensive and pretty manly. In this era of data and accountability, we're probably five to 10 years behind in terms of the tools that we have to crunch data. We're doing a lot of things through Excel and through pivot tables for those people who understand how to use pivot tables and things like that that have not been, have not been in place. Again, so we would have a data warehouse that at the click of a button, we're able to align a variety of tools that we use, take a look at how students are performing and get a little bit more clear about pinpointing the issue. So it's sort of like diagnosing a concern or a strength and being able to clearly problem solve how you're going to impact that area. Implement research-based dialogue, data dialogue. Our staff again have data dialogues using the MAP assessment in WEA. There are teacher reports, classroom reports, student reports, school level reports. And we've compiled a lot of data and we've made that information available to staff to be able to take a look at it and measure how much did we grow from the time that we did this assessment in September to the time that we did it again in December? And then we have a final assessment that will come in May. And the goal again is looking at how much we're growing over time. Responsive approaches to struggling learners. It's really easy to say Veronica's struggling, but what's more complex and difficult is understanding where Veronica's struggling or why Veronica's struggling. It's easy to say Veronica is struggling with reading. That essentially, when you're looking at a data-driven process, doesn't mean much. What in reading is Veronica struggling with? If we say comprehension, she's struggling with comprehension, then that's getting a little bit closer to understanding where her challenges are and a little bit closer to determining what you're going to do, one, in core instruction, two, with additional support to help Veronica move forward with comprehension. So when we hear teachers talk about kids are struggling, and we use, we try to use the language as common as we possibly can, but let's not make a mistake in fully understanding what teachers are doing as they begin to narrow down exactly where Veronica's struggling. So there's a lot more that goes into that process of determining where she's struggling. The same thing with strengths. Because even though Veronica's struggling, Veronica also has strengths. Everybody has them. And so being able to identify what areas are we really strong in so that we can build on those in order to improve areas where we're not as strong in. And so data dialogues kind of help us push through that process. So we will use data to, for early identification of student learning needs. Again, we start off right in the bones. And then over the years, as we're into this process, what should happen is we should have a portfolio for any student that shows us over time how well Veronica has progressed from third grade to ninth grade using some similar data points and not having to start all over from scratch again. Increase parental engagement. We heard loud and clear last week from many areas that you want to be involved and that we have not adequately involved you. And so we know you need to make some changes very quickly there. And so we want to work with you to determine what does parental engagement look like for you? Often, we have policies and we have procedures around parental engagement, but what I've learned is that based on the community that you're in, based on the culture of your community, based on the culture of your schools, you know, you need to define or help us define what parental engagement looks like. I know that it doesn't look like always you coming to something. It doesn't look like always sending you stuff for you to respond to. It needs to be a two-way communication process. And so we'll get really deep into what does parental engagement look like? It also looks like you knowing and understanding very well the assessments that are given to your students, what those scores mean for your student, and then how we're addressing those in the classroom and how we're collectively addressing those as a district. Again, student goal setting, and that's in there a couple of times because it is so important. Often, our students don't know what we're expecting of them. But you know what, at kindergarten, if we're telling you and we're having you goal set, Veronica, you in two weeks need to know what a circle is and be able to describe it and point it out. You need to know what a triangle is and be able to describe it and point it out. And you need to know what a line is, describe it and point it out. What's the difference between the three? Again, making it relevant for Veronica, helping her to set goals then in two weeks. I've got to do a lot of hard work so that in two weeks, when my teacher is assessing me and mom and dad, aunt and uncle, and grandparents and everybody at home have to help Veronica get that goal accomplished within two weeks. Current research-based instructional techniques. Instructional techniques change, yet they remain the same. With the implementation of Common Core, there are a lot of things that we absolutely will have to do differently. Common Core is a lot about thinking, processing, not always about having an exact right answer, but having a process to get to the best answer. It's not always about being right or wrong or exact, but about how you think about an answer to something. It's about how you create. How can you put your, you can put your hands on something and come up with something totally different than you put your hands on and come up with, but that does more the way that I did it as a teacher, but it doesn't make you wrong. It means that you've come up with another way to accomplish something. So it's about what you do. So, and you know what, traditional education, we've used a lot of worksheets. We've used a lot of paper things. But again, teaching strategies will have to change so that we're getting a little more focused, a lot more focused on what are you thinking or how did you think in order to create this response? Increase professional development on Common Core curriculum. The Common Core English Language Arts standards have been out for about two years. In the summer of 2011, I believe it was June, because I saw those documents were the first things that I saw on my desk when I came in in July. Teachers got together and worked through Common Core alignment for English Language Arts. In the fall, during our institute days, those teachers and leaders got together and collectively trained other teachers on the math, on the alignment, on the guides. What we didn't have in place were tools that aligned with the new curriculum and the new documents. So it's that our building teachers and our building principals trying to figure out what they were going to use to teach the information that they had worked together during the summer to align. Something very similar with math occurs. So as we speak, we have a literacy committee that is again, working on realignment. And again, those of you who have been working curriculum know that it is an ongoing process. You never say it is done and walk away from it and will come back to it, you know, in four or five years. No. Alignment is always happening. The tightest alignment happens between the relationship of the teacher, the content being taught, and the student. So yes, we need to have common alignment across the district. We need to have a common path that we're going down. But then even after that, teachers take that information and then plan effectively how they're going to engage students in learning that information and moving them forward. So there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of talk about curriculum alignment, a lot of talk. But we also need common materials by which, because we, you know, because we are a unit district. So that when you move from one school to another or you look at things happening from one school to another, we're looking at apples and apples. Math will begin in the fall, but it doesn't, and again, a curriculum review cycle. And I'm going to, this is education jargon, I know. Typically, every six years, you want to review your materials along with a full review of curriculum. We're in a unique time because we are in the implementation of Common Core. There are lots of things changing with Common Core daily on a national level. But as they get closer to planning for what our assessments or our tests are going to look like, beginning and all those things are becoming more clear to us. Now companies who have the resources available to us are beginning to plan around that. And we have things now that we can take a look at, look at our population, look at our assessments, and then have materials that once that alignment process is done, that we have tools that we can go to in order to clearly teach what it is we want students to learn and do well. Increase coaching opportunities for teachers. Again, with the implementation of Common Core, we'll be teaching and leading differently than we ever have. Conversations are different. And so the best way to get at that is that we're learning as leaders. We've had, we've got leadership coaching happening. We've got leadership professional development happening and we continue that. But we also know that the best professional development for teachers is sometimes to have someone right there to be able to help you or give you feedback on how you're doing or you're watching what they're doing and giving them feedback. So we know that you need to increase the coaching opportunities. Implement evaluation and accountability systems. Our state has put in place a mandated accountability or evaluation system for leaders. And we've been And we've been operating under that now for the past 10 years. So all administrators connected to teaching and learning also are evaluated on student achievement. So if we don't improve, our evaluations are reflective of what did we do in order to increase student achievement. In 2014-15, the new teacher evaluation process will be in place. All of we have an evaluation process in place right now. But in 2014-15, all teachers as well as administrators' evaluation will be tied to student growth. When we talk about uninterrupted time on core subject areas, we want to make sure that for literacy, for math, for science, for social studies, those critical things that everything else kind of connects to, that we've got to make sure that our day is aligned in a way that we can have meaningful engagement around the core curriculum and around the content and that around, in half-time for teachers to be able to teach or deliver lessons that give kids opportunity to do the thinking, to do the inquiry, to do the processing. And again, increase collaboration time to do that. And then focus on teacher planning. It takes a lot of time to plan effectively how you're going to set up a problem-based activity more so than it takes for us to do some, you know, say, well, we're going to do this, then we'll check. We'll have kids practice on a worksheet. It's different to have students practice by having conversations with each other, by having conversations in a group and coming up with a group thought. So we know that our teachers need time to collaborate with that effectively. Safe and orderly environment. Create an environment of respect and rapport. Respect and rapport between staff and students, between student and student, between staff and leadership, between leadership with students. I mean, it has to be a cycle. And again, rapport means I respect you for who you are. I respect you as an individual on this planet. You have just as much of a right to an idea, a thought, as I do. And that we have to find a way to, you know, fully engage in meaningful conversation and have an understanding of each other. So that's just a general overthought in terms of building the culture of a school. It's got to be a place where not only adults feel trusted or that they can trust each other, but that students feel that when they walk into this is a ladies' classroom, that she is going to give me her absolute best today, even though she may not feel well. And that she's got my best interest at heart and vice versa. And I know Veronica as a student and sometimes she can, you know, kind of get off on the wrong side of the bed sometimes. But you know what? Veronica as a student has to also recognize that part of her responsibility is to fully engage in what the teacher is teaching in the classroom so that she can learn. PBIS is something that we've already, again, begun implementing. But those, the people who, or the research group who has been following PBIS throughout the nation over the last several years will tell you, it is something that you have to come back to and come back to and come back to because it's less about school rules and more about how we operate as a community. A community within our classroom, a community within our school, a community within our district. And everybody is responsible for everybody else. It really is more about building a community. Strong homeschool connections. Again, conduct cultural sensitivities and diversity training. What we heard from our parents over the last several weeks, as well as some things that were identified in a comprehensive needs assessment that was conducted by an outside company last year, is that we really need to fully understand that our community has changed and is continuing to change. And recognizing any unspoken misunderstandings that we may have about each other. But then to really look deep within ourselves and determine how well we're growing and able to support the needs of the population that we serve. And I think we had a parent who spoke out at one of the public comments that we had, sharing that how often information goes out, recognizing the number of state parents and families that we have that are English, not either non-English speaking or limited English speaking, and that we need to be a little bit more responsive to that. Improve and increase communication with parents regarding student achievement. We've heard from our parents, yes, I got it home, but I don't know. But it didn't make sense to me. So we've got to do a better job of making sure that parents understand that if you are not reading by the end of kindergarten, that you are not on track. And I think we've, I think somebody on our team maybe said it earlier, and that is, we've said it, but maybe we haven't said it firmly enough so that people understand, yes, I'm growing and through my efforts, I get smarter and I'm being awarded for that and I'm working hard and I'm giving credit for that. However, it still is not where you should be in the scope of things. So that we all know that, you know what? Yeah, I could call some words, but I'm not reading and I'm at the end of kindergarten. And with this whole, not just Common Core, but even in our previous Illinois learning standards, by the end of kindergarten, students should be reading. So, I mean, that means things at different ages, but we need to make sure that we are helping parents to understand what that means. Engage your parents as educational partners. You are your child's first teacher and we can't do this without you. And so that means we've got to do a better job of helping you understand what we need. But we also need you to be as accountable for your students as we are. Include parents in school improvement process. We've worked through all these plans. We are supposed to involve you in the process so that we have your thinking at the table at the very onset. And so we are, we will begin working through the process of having parents on family building leadership team, which is what drives the school improvement process. So that you are aware of the strategy being used at your school to help improve. Strong leadership and management practices. Leadership has to, is at the top of all of us. We've got to drive it. We have to be divisionaires. We have to continue to put ourselves in a position to know what to do. Sometimes it may not be popular, but that's the role that we sit in. And so we have to be willing to take the heat. Board-level education committee is something that will be established because we want to make sure that there's another venue where we are able to share the practices that are happening in teaching and learning and the requirements that are coming up, which will give the board a better understanding of the things that we're up against. And we're already doing that with a board-level finance committee. And so a board-level education committee will be put into place. Principal leadership professional development theory. Again, with the new evaluation process, there's a lot built into that. And so we're taking our principals through professional development with that. He's done a variety of training on research-based practices regarding just leadership in general. However, with literacy and with math and with instruction, we will continue to put additional things in place so that we are fully developing ourselves as leaders in what is expected in teaching and learning. We've done book studies on leadership. We will continue to do those. We're redesigning our building leadership teams. Again, we need to make sure that principals are able to identify and select those people that they need most in order to move achievement in the buildings. Accountability for student achievement. And I talked a little bit about that. It's accountability, and I would say not just in test data because that's one piece of the puzzle. I think there are many pieces of the problem that we have to look for in terms of accountability. And it's not just within a test score.
Thank you, Veronica. School governance option costs. We talked about what the cost of the grade-level centers would be. This is what the estimated cost would be for the school governance option. HR, we need additional staff for collaboration. We talked about the importance of our elementary teachers being able to collaborate. We had collaboration at the middle school. We have collaboration at the high school. We don't have time for our teachers to collaborate at the elementary school. So as we're looking at where we need to go and how we move forward with getting some time for them to do that, we would have to have some additional staff for this. Information technology. As we talked about additional educational materials, including software licenses and equipment for the new staff. Facilities, we would have no cost there because there would not be the movement of staff and the students. And transportation. We have taken a look at what our bell schedule is. Right now, we have a common bell schedule for our elementaries. If we have a standard bell schedule where all of the buses didn't have to be at the same place at the same time, it would save us $110,000. So we feel that we have to take a look at how can we save $110,000 by strengthening our bell schedule. So that is a total estimated cost of $374,900. The additional cost which we have to consider, we are looking at a textbook adoption. As we have said, we do not have the same textbooks across all of our schools, even across classrooms within a building. And as we look at, you know, the literacy piece, we have to have common tools and resources for our teachers to use in the classroom. Textbooks are very expensive. In many instances, a single textbook without even the supplemental materials or without the professional development could be anywhere from $80 to $100 per textbook. We have not purchased textbooks in a number of years for our teachers. So we know it's a big expense, but we know that we have got to take a look at as we talk about solving our problem regarding the achievement, student achievement, we've got to have common tools for our teachers to use. Additional staff due to state mandates. The state has now mandated, and this is a new ruling, that every school district must have a certified school nurse. Not just a nurse, not just nurses assistants, but a certified school nurse. Every district across the state is scrambling to find certified school nurses who have that certification. This is now a requirement. It's not something that we ask for. It's what the state says. All school districts, we now must do this. And this must be in place by the time school starts. So this is an additional staff number that we must hire. Also, due to our special ed numbers, we need an additional special education teacher. The data warehouse, which we refer to, which where we can dump our numbers into the warehouse and it can crunch the numbers for us. That is at a cost of $40,000. And the, right now, we're talking about the elementary piece. We'll be coming back with the high school piece next and then the middle school piece following that. But we wanted to get your information regarding the elementary and the others will come back later. Our final recommendation. We have talked to you about the grade-level centers. We have talked to you about what the U S community, as well as what our staff has said about grade-level centers. We have shared the research with you regarding grade-level centers. And we also have talked about the cost of grade-level centers. We've done the same thing for the school governance model, which with the school governance model, that has to be in effect no matter which other model we look at, whether we have looked at theme schools or if we had looked at grade-level centers. We still have to make the changes that Veronica just shared, which are scientifically best practice, research best practices. We have to do that no matter what. As we take a look at what is it that we need to do and taking a look at the other areas that we mentioned, my recommendation to the Board of Education as we have looked at the numbers, as we have taken a look at the research and taken a look at the surveys that have been presented to us is that we go with the school governance model. The school governance model would include a clear mission, guiding daily activities. High unyielding expectations. And when I say high unyielding expectations, it means that we're not functioning at the level where we are right now, but that we are moving to a higher level of expectations for all of us that all students will learn through an aligned and viable curriculum. That we are looking at through this model, frequent monitoring of student progress so that we don't know at the end of the year whether or not students are being successful. But we are monitoring throughout the school to see where students are and what the needs are before we reach the end of the year. That we're putting in place responsive approaches for struggling students if we know that students are struggling. What this research and best practice tell us that we need to be doing to move those students forward. Because we know if we have any students who are struggling and are not being successful, then we are not doing everything that we need to do. And as we said before, we need to know that parents and the community are working with us to make this happen. And that's why I'm so glad that so many of you are here this evening. Responsive approaches for struggling students. Uninterrupted and adequate time on core subject. We have to take a look at what is going on throughout the course of the day. Are we focused? Are we putting in maximum amount of time on the teaching that needs to take place within the classroom? Or are there other things that are occupying our time? So we need to be focused and make sure that there is focused time on core instruction. Let's see. A safe and orderly environment. We definitely, and as we talked about the positive behavior interventions and support, we have to have a safe and orderly environment. You'll hear a report shortly after this one, which has to do with discipline within our schools. And we're showing this year compared to last year that there is a reduction in the number of suspensions. We know that if children are not in school, they can't learn. And so we know that we've been putting PBIS in place and that we are seeing with our staff, as well as with our parents and our administration working together, that we're seeing some improvement in these areas. Strong homeschool connection. And I can't emphasize that enough. We have got to do this. We have got to do a better job of letting you know what the data means. We have got to take a look at if students are being identified for the honor roll, that it also means that they're doing well on state and national assessments. There can't be a disconnect there. It's really, I think, unsettling for parents and for others if you're going to an honor assembly and you're thinking that your child is doing well academically, then when you get the state test and other results back and find out that the student is not doing well. So we need a strong connection there. Strong leadership and management practices. As Veronica shared, we have already been doing book studies on leadership. We continue to take a look at leadership and to understand what the role of leadership is in bringing about the change that we're talking about. And that is the end of our presentation. So questions from the board?
Dr. Collins, the final recommendation. You said, and I think everybody's up for a change, but how do they buy into believing you?
Mr. Vincent, we're going to have some time for public comment. This is for questions for the board. I think...
If we had the curriculum in place last year for English Language Arts, why is it that we didn't have the common materials for the teachers to utilize to implement that curriculum?
That work began in June. I can't remember what the planning process was. I believe that the assumption was that teachers and principals would go back to their buildings and pull together what they had to implement that. So again, I would be answering that, trying to answer that. So again, I would be answering that, trying to answer that from someone else's perspective. But what we do know is now that we've got, with the whole Common Core theme in place, we really need to make sure that we've got materials and resources that are aligned with that, aligned with Common Core.
I just want to make sure, as I am today the chairman of the finance committee, I want to make sure that it's not a financial obstacle to obtain these textbooks for Common Core implementation. It's a high enough priority of the district that I think we can find or reallocate funds to make sure that that is properly supported.
I have a question on the data warehouse. Is this going to be an extension or part of Skyworth so that teachers can access it as a new community district and that parents can see the progress of the students?
I can definitely say that we have looked at a number of systems and we have been spending over the course of this year, having different groups present to us and taking a look at what Skyworth is able to do and all of the other companies and what they can provide. I believe that we are at a point right now, but we will be coming to the board sometime soon. And we are looking at the extension or really activating a module of Skyworth that would allow us to really take our data, which is already stored in Skyworth, and pull it together for a data warehouse, so that it becomes easy for our staff to really work with the data and have all of the data of one student in one place, where right now we're having to go to different places to find the data and try and pull it together manually. As far as who would have access to the data, other than staff, would anyone else have access to this? Yes, we have a recommendation phase. I would imagine that once we pull the data and we have it all together in one place, that as teachers speak with parents about their child, they would be able to show them all of the information on their child. So whether it's NWA map data, ISAT data, classroom data, all of it would be under one child's name and it would be much easier for our staff and would be able to share that.
I have one more question, kind of going back to the textbooks. While we're working on this alignment and while we're working on the Common Core and while I did with the state standards, what are we doing? Until we get recommendations?
This is, keep in mind that this work is going on now, this work is always started. So this is, and so if you're asking what are we doing between now and the end of the school year, or what are we doing as a little parent for next year?
As a little parent for next year, is there going to be a recommendation forward?
Yes, definitely, that should come in shortly. They will, no, no. We've already said what the cost is for the language arts piece. So that recommendation as far as those materials, it will be coming forward. We are working on the math piece, and we will start with the math piece and rolling it out. We're also looking at the expectation just of professional development that the staff will have to go through as they're learning all of these components of a new program. And that's why we're rolling out the literacy piece first, because we know that language and reading is a part of everything, whether it's social studies or science, et cetera. And then we're starting to work on the math piece. And that starts, does that start this summer or in the fall? It starts in the fall. And we will be going through the same process, I'll be looking at the textbook series. And so our goal is that by this time next year, we will be coming forward and saying, asking for a recommendation and funds to support a math series with the professional development and all the pieces that are with that. However, even though that is the case, and we're not rolling it all out massively at one time, we still have a responsibility to take a look at in the math area, because we know we can't afford to lose a year to say, what are those areas of concern and focus? And what do we know about the data that presently exists? And what do we put in place so that we know that everything that we talked about, the accountability, as well as the monitoring, et cetera, is in place? And we're looking at our math performance and seeing that we're not losing ground while we're waiting to go through that process.
So I would assume that during some of this articulation with your building leadership teams, you guys are going to figure out what to do for math and that will go down to your teachers?
Yes.
So that next year, all of your grades will be working similar areas, even if the teachers were pulling things together and researching it together?
Yes.
I have another question after all. The teacher collaboration for elementary, yes. So I understand, pardon me, that they are not having collaboration times over time?
No, we have not had in place at our elementary schools that teacher collaboration time, which exists at the middle schools and the high schools. And so that is something that we have been talking about for a couple of years, really working to see how we make that happen for the teachers. And as a result of what we're taking a look at with the restructuring model, we know that collaboration and research supports the importance of collaboration so the teachers can come together and really take a look at what the needs of the students are, and even doing common assessments, et cetera, that this will allow them an opportunity to do that. So that has not existed at the elementary schools. There have been some schools, a couple of schools who created this, have been able to find some time for collaboration within that building. But district-wide, as far as the district saying, that all of our elementary schools will have our collaboration time, y'all will be in that.
Okay, so how will this collaboration time work if we're not people with grade centers, that all the third grade or fourth grade look the same in the district? So that third grade at Murphy is not learning something different than the third grade?
Keep in mind that even if we are going to grade level centers, there would have been more than one, one, two building. So we still would have separate buildings. We, this is for collaboration within the building so that all the third grade teachers, all the fourth grade teachers can get together within that building. We do have school improvement days, which are district-wide, meaning there is, as well as professional development days, which are district-wide. So we have opportunities for teachers of similar grades across the district to be able to get together so that some work can be done.
And the 428 million for additional staff to do this collaboration times that first semester come in, how's that working now?
What we're looking at is, and I can't be specific right now because we're still looking at what type of staff we're talking about, who we provide, some release time that would be staff who would be working with the children while the teacher at a particular grade level are released to be together to do collaboration. So the children would have instruction in some identified area, and we're still working through what that identified area is. If someone is working with the children, a lot of teachers are allowed to do the collaboration.
So we, the Board of Education and votes in favor of this new governance option, how do you plan to keep us informed as to any movement that's going on with the district?
Good question. We were on the chair earlier that we have upcoming meetings. We have another board meeting next week. And so we will be updating the board that's already scheduled next week. We have a community forum scheduled on the eleventh, yeah, the eleventh. And so there again, we will be doing a meeting together at that time. And then the final plan will be ready by the end of February. So there are a number of meetings that are scheduled with the board and with the community, that there will be opportunities to see how we're putting in the balance at this point.
Is that front topic moving forward into the next school year? How often will the board be updated? How often will it be updated?
You know, the conversation, and here again, a lot of this is preliminary at this point because we're just going to be able to move forward with the presentation tonight. What I would envision is that there will be four meetings a year on a quarterly basis, where before what we have been doing is having an individual building present once a month, that we would be doing a quarterly presentation on the achievement of all of our students with the board and providing an update as to where we are at that particular time. So there will be four meetings every year, where there will be focus on student achievement. And we would be sharing with the board how our students are doing and whether or not we're making progress toward the goals that we're going to achieve. And then we also, the recommendation of an education committee of the board, which would allow on a monthly basis to have the heads of teaching and learning be with one or two board members, and that would be an open meeting to really talk about the progress that we're making at this point.
I'm a migrant from the Philippines, I've been here for six years only. And my kids, when they came here, no English at all. So they struggled at first. But it was my husband and my choice for them, you know, like, not really to let go or language, but... It's our choice for them to cope in school and not to struggle that they have to learn English faster, and so that's what we do. And right now, two of my kids are, you know, they have a C standard left. So I think we need that everything has to be taught in English at school, because I believe that we as migrants to adapt to America and not America adapting to us, because we chose to live here. And also, I'm very involved in all schools, in all four different schools, I'm very involved. And I just want to encourage all the parents to be involved in your work. It doesn't have to be, you don't have to give like every day of your life, no. But at least a portion of the time in one year in that whole manner for your kids. I believe in that one. And I just hope that the board and this whole administration will have like an parent advice or a council in every school, so that it's not a PTO thing, but it's more like us parents will collaborate on how we can help our kids to grow as better schools, so that we could help them reach the A1B. You know, it's something like that. Anyway, I would encourage that, and I believe that everything will be perfect.
On the homepage of the website, on the left-hand side, there's the school restructuring tab. If you click that, all of the presentations, including video and questions, answers to those questions. Yeah, those are Board of Education minutes, but there's a separate page for that.
I'm Sunny Anderson, I live in the six-entennial drive in Mayneville. Now, there was a comment made tonight about parent contribution and involvement. And my question related to, you know, communication between the parents and the teachers, communication with the school district, the schools, and parents. Now, I've been at Ellis, my kids have been with Dee, and the high school. And I call, leave a message on the voice mailbox, and any of those schools, I never get a call back. I've been here for three years, that's ridiculous. If I leave a message, I expect to be called back within twenty-four, thirty hours at the most. Three years, nothing. And for parents' involvement, I am really involved in my kids. I want them to be the best and do the best. And if I'm communicating with a teacher via email or on the phone, I should not be stopped and said, "Your child is responsible for the work." Yes, they do, but at the same time, they're a child. And if they're struggling and they go for help and they are not getting the answers, they come to me as the adult, and I say, "Guess what, I will talk to your teacher to help get you help." And they go to me, "Your child is responsible," my child's not getting it. It's why they're asking me, because you're not helping them understand whatever it's been struggling with. You should not tell me that I can't be involved and ask those questions. And as for the report cards, when they come home and the grades aren't As and Bs, it should not be generic statements dealing, "Great to have you in class." My child is struggling. Comments should be specific for my child of why he or she is not getting an A or B. I should have to wait to conferences, be like, "Oh, we'll talk about it then." No, I want to know now, my child is struggling. And then the Skyworth states, "Your grade, what was missed," or whatnot. Okay, that tells me what happened. But if I inquire, "Okay, is there extra credit?" "We should get your school, we should get assistance." And there's nothing in response to that. How is it helping my child if they're going to post it online, if nothing can be followed afterwards, to help assist the students? It's not helping our kids do better. So if the parents are trying to communicate with teachers, did you need to meet us halfway? And talk to us too, thank you. For parents who want to get involved with the schools, the PAC does have a next meeting Tuesday, February 12, at Village Six to Seven, please feel free to come. Anyone who wants to get involved with schools, it's all districts, all schools, thank you.
Do you have a number of those sheets? Did you, do you want to put them on the table? People can grab them from the table? Thank you, just a good thank you.
My name is David Getzke, eight six eight number six, from Illinois. Last week, we talked about the school reform, and we had, we had group session talks. And I felt, I really, I don't think, I don't really want to state that, I was really saying that the state wasn't represented. There are those in constant state coming. And the problem is that there's got to be a different form of accountability. Whether it's good or bad, it doesn't matter, it's a change. And it was not really represented, represented without a change here, but I don't think there's accountability standing behind it. If it fails, the same people will be still working in the same positions. You'll be sitting in the same seats, talking about it two years from now. Now, if somebody stepped up and said, "Hey, I give up my job, should this fail?" At least their holding ownership, you can buy into that. I'm not really sensing the trust, the accountability with the current proposal. The change in itself is not bad, but where do you have the management accountability? They want, it does not seem like that answer will ever be answered. They'll say they're more accountable, or they have higher accountability, but to who? To themselves, to their spouse, to you? So if they tell you they did a bad job, what can you do about it? You can sit there and get done and say, "Try again for two more years." I, I, I hope that, oh, I know what it means, but votes, we did the votes yesterday. And I was quite surprised to see how many people, even from, if I understood the numbers correctly, the school, wanted the state to take over. And I was really amazed by that, I thought I'd be the only one to vote that way. And it's not because I want the state to take over, it's just that I don't want the current administration in place when we go through the change. I'm not sure what happens with that vote, that tally mark. There was also mention that more than one mark is marked on a ballot sheet. If you looked at the, if you looked at the ballots, it said, "Which do you like the least?" There were, I think, four selections, but state was not mentioned. And on the next question was, "What do you like the most?" There was four choices, state was not mentioned. Only on the exit, if you vote, bring the state in. I think there was kind of a little bit of missing on the election as well. If the state would have been included, somebody could have chose to check it, they could have chosen not to for the least and the most of your picks. So that's what I had to say. And thanks board, we'd be very glad to hear it.
Good evening, my name is Pegasus Gallow, and I have two daughters, one in the beach, one in the high school. And I live in sixteen oh five, northeast Alamo Valley Beach. And pretty much, I want to talk in behalf of all the missing, all of this, um, board right here. I sit in many other groups, they were formed, I gave a fork, very usual conversation, all the hands of class, we have, my question to you board, are you responsible pretty much for all the decisions, budgets, and everything that superintendent presents to you? Are you always supposed to make the decisions, the what goes forward, what stops? Is that how it works here? Anybody want to answer? Anybody want to answer? Well, okay, because, because... Only financial. All right. When you look at the financials, if that's the one I want to talk about, is you've got to take a look at what's happening in this state. Even me, as Mexican, and I speak English, and not all the Mexicans don't speak English. Some of them do. And some of them need that communication, they lack of administration or in everyone in the district. I don't see any Hispanic-speaking people here. They can reach out to those, to those persons that need, get communicated. A job for me to share, but you don't have really the sensitivity to understand what is happening in the community. Have you looked around yourself in the schools, in the streets? Seventy to eight percent, the last thing I, that's the thing I checked, the numbers, is Spanish around here. What is the sensitivity for that community? I don't see it. Take that, I know English and I can read and I can, I have a computer to go on the websites and stuff. I'm identifying all these four forms to make my course work. You guys ignore the Hispanic community, the biggest population, the biggest demographic in the district. I understand, believe me, I'm very engaged, you can talk to the principal, the principal, all my past teachers, and I'm always engaged in my presentation. I don't like to brag about them, but I make them accountable every single night they have home. But I want to make you guys like, people in the Hispanic community, they know me, I talk to them and make them responsible for their own kids all the time. All right? So please, any recommendation or any vote you take, start taking responsibility in what you do. It's not just about me understanding me. Please, look around. This goal, don't stimulate no one to the woman. It's not my fault. It is what I believe is right now. Even me, I mean here, nine years, nine years ago, it was not that many Hispanic people around. But they are, and guess what? They need to be counted in all these forums. You think that she's going to be able to translate according to 25 people? It's not for, I understand all the voices that people in the radio, they need to learn English, and they need to get engaged in the community, yes. But guess what? It's not yet. For those who don't understand, we need to reach out. You've been lucky in not, you know, with schools, the board, the administration. You send one letter home, one roll call, sometimes three, four, it's the same thing. Nobody listens to those things. If you keep, if you keep falling through the cracks, and one of the parents said, "If she's not told her, it's not as bad." That's a professional, that's bad. She knows she's not really proven. How, how could you not be able to call and not get answers? Imagine her speaking English, it's my, imagine someone who speaks all Spanish. How's it going to help the district? How's it going to help you as an administrator or as teacher? This, after what he does now, I need my time to call it out. Take your attention, but please, start looking around yourself. Not be just looking around the table or in your, in your, in your room. Please go around, go to Walmart, go to any stores, you don't know how many Spanish speakers there are. You need to be engaged, get engaged, let them know. Thank you.
Thank you for welcoming your comments. We are going to move on to the discipline report.
We have the board packet, a copy of the discipline report, which appears December 11th, suspensions with December 12th. Overall, the number of suspensions is about half of what they were in December of 2011. So there's been a reduction in the number of suspensions. So, I have some questions regarding the suspension report. You can get copies of the board packets online if you come to school board meetings. Otherwise, the total for December of 2011 was 112 suspensions. For the district for December of 2012, 63 suspensions. So there is a reduction in the number of suspensions by about half of what they were last year. We have a breakdown by school of major infractions, which include fighting, using language, harassment, bullying. It's important to note that probably most of the infractions were either fighting or using language. No questions on the report? Want to receive a cover of the report? Destination Excellence 200 program is a rising broadcast on WRLR 98.3 AM. Long Lake High School will host tomorrow's radio broadcast. February schedule is listed below. Please recall that if you're unable to tune in each week or want to listen to a past broadcast again, you may access each broadcast on the district's website, February 5th. Long Lake Middle School will be presenting February 12th, the preschool program. February 19th, Diane Decker, overall research evaluation and assessment. And February 26th, Diane Brown, Special Services Director. For the D sign, you may have noticed that the Marquee, John T. B. Middle School has not been functioning for several weeks. Text, along with an electrician, have left the sign, but have not been able to assess this problem to date. Technology is currently testing the science computer, will provide an update to the board later this week regarding the status. Consortium for Educational Change Training Principal, Assistant Principals and Teaching and Learning Administrators participated in one of three scheduled training sessions with Consortium for Educational Change last Friday. The title of this training module was, "Using the Danielson Framework to Enhance Professional Practice, Digging Deeper Into the Framework." This goes along with a training that we provide for the teaching staff next year, which leads to the Change in Teacher Evaluation Program. Visit to South Burn, School District 100. South Burn, School District 100 will be hosting an open house tomorrow for school districts to come observe some of the areas in which they have experienced tremendous success. South Burn is 86% minority, 76% poverty level, and are at the bottom quartile of funding within the state. They have been noted for an unusually high level of engagement among school students. They have a successful one-to-one consultation of MacBooks and iPads for 100% of their students. One of their elementary schools was named a 2012 National Title I Distinguished School based upon closing the achievement gap between student groups. I, along with the representative from our elementary, middle, and high school, will attend this open house on tomorrow. ISAT Cut Score Changes, as you are aware, ISB approved raising ISAT performance levels last week. The district will begin this week to communicate these changes and what this means to staff, students, and families. The ISB news released states by raising the cut scores, performance outcomes will be better aligned with the more rigorous and robust standards of the Common Core being implemented in schools across the state and provide more accurate information about students' progress towards success after high school. Lake County Forest Preserve Program honoring African-American educators. I've been invited to speak in Black History Month Program honoring Lake County African-American educators, hosted by the Lake County Forest Preserve this Sunday, February 3rd. I'll speak about my role as an African-American educator, and that is it for the discipline report.
I've got a question regarding the ICF task force.
Yes.
Are we going to hand any points of communication to parents and families to the district website?
Yes, yes, we will, in fact.
Will you signature?
Yes.
I give the report.
Yes. Yes, we have that information and we and I discussed letters which we will be sending out and also this will be on the district website.
Okay, we'll move on to the audience update. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you. Very briefly, I'll update on a couple of key developments in Finance Committee. One is the presentation of District-wide Print Management Program, which will be discussed later tonight in the new business. That covers our printing requirements, which is separate from our copying requirements. One of the things we need to discuss is really honest, you know, those who are kids in the district know that they come home with an awful lot of photocopy paper. And my question was really about ongoing demand for printing relative to what we're preaching to. For going to do photocopies or actually something higher tech like computers. Some of the things that Dr. Carter just mentioned. We're seeing the develops and how to change it. The print management contracts and copying contracts, we have a number of them in the district. Another thing that we discussed at the semi-deal last Friday, which Charlie Primm's update on capital projects, a couple of highlights from that section of the meeting. At Beach Elementary, we are doing a project, we're completely used for a gym. The estimated cost on that was originally $75,000. The good news is Charlie predicts that that's going to be now $135,000 to complete that project, which is very good news. And another project that was on the docket, but not a dollar amount attached to it, is a safety and security project to update the district-wide safety and security systems to an internet-based system that we have started with a bunch of codes on that, it's like $350,000. That's a very cool project, the safety and security, we will put, you know, monitor accounts of all our entrances for all our buildings. And considering what's happened to those four districts, I think that's a very important project for us to pursue. Yeah, those are the highlights. Mr. Johnson, I think I previously said the highlights right there. As I said, implied earlier, we have not had a real discussion about the cost of curtain changes, and I really look forward to discussing that in Finance Committee. We also look forward to, in our very next meeting, which is very next Monday, talking about fire projections. So that's on the docket. Feel free to come on by, it's an open, public meeting too.
When will we find out what your vote has been? I'm sorry if you're rude, I know you're not taking questions now, but when will we find out what your vote in regard to what our children are going through? Is it going to be on your website tomorrow, since everything has to be due within a certain amount of time that's submitted to the city? Or the state, or?
It's coming up on the agenda.
It is? Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, the motion to approve the session minutes of December 17th, special meeting number one, December 17th, special meeting number two, December 17th, January meeting, December 20th, special meeting, January 7th, special meeting number one, January 7th, special meeting number two, and January 14th, committee to hold.
Mr. Daniels second, I don't know if there's any discussion. I would say yes, there is. On the January 7th, special meeting, this one wasn't there, but she's second here. Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Rattler?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Purdy?
Yes.
Motion here. I need a motion for approval. Start agenda. Let's go to the motion, Mr. Daniels second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Purdy?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rattler?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Keep them up.
Yes.
A motion here. All business. Okay, the motion to approve the elementary school restructuring plan to improve student achievement. Does not say the one that, that would be the government's option. School government. Mr. Daniels made the motion, Mr. Purdy is second, is there any discussion? Okay, I would just like to say before we go down this, I know most of the stuff, but I really would like to thank the parents, the community members who have come out, the teachers, the staff, the administration, my fellow board members, for their comments, their questions, and their input. I know that everyone isn't going to get what they hope for, but I hope that moving forward, we can, we can continue to work together. I hope that you will continue to come out, be part of the current voice in this community. And, and I will say that what we did learn from this process was that we do need to improve our community. I think that you all have a lot to say, you have very valid points. And I hope that you will continue to come to our school board meetings, and I hope that you will be a part of all of this moving forward. I also want to thank the young people who were here tonight, they were so well behaved and good here, so I want to thank everybody there, too.
I want to remind everybody out here from the community that we are your board. We are here to represent you, the community, the active members. Some of us are, you know, there's an election coming, you can choose to vote for who sits on this board. And it's our job to make sure that we're getting everything we can for our purpose, that we're spending our funds responsibly, that we are getting the highest level of student achievement from our one employee. Our one employee is a servant, that's what the board does, that's where your responsibility lies. So we are the extension of you, and our email addresses are posted, our meetings are open. We are welcome for you to reach out to us and come sit in our meetings and be active in our schools. We are a public school district.
The only way that we know what you want.
Is there a translator in all of the meetings?
We can arrange.
I'm not sure if I can break it out. Because I think some of it's not, a lot of these people would come maybe. I have a question, Dr. Holmes. Any of the community forums that's a seven AM, if, please, to ask, if you can, based on this, will we get a better breakdown on some of this information from here? You know, some of the costs, if the human resources additional staff, what are we, how are we looking to increase that parental involvement in this model?
Yes, as we, as I indicated earlier, as we hold each of the meetings, like the board meeting next week, we should be able to give you additional information at that time. The minute to form is on the 11th, we should be able to give you even more information then, and then at the last board meeting, February, we should have the total ready at that time.
I would like to make one final comment. We are very much aware of our Hispanic population, and we really, you know, we've had some great ideas and great feedback from a lot of parents regarding involving our parents and getting information. Now, please provide, you know, you tell us what's going to work. I mean, tell us what your neighbors are talking about, tell us what your friends are talking about, your community. We're always looking for ideas, for different ways to be our entire community. And I mean, any kind of input you want to give, we'll gladly take. We do spend a lot of time talking about getting our parents involved, and also, and I think one of our biggest problems is trying to figure out what exactly does that mean? And that's for me, your input as a community. And if it's going to take and interpret and be at all our meetings, that's certainly something, you know, we'll, you know, we'll take into effect, we'll consider everything.
Mrs. Burdine?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Okay, we move on to the business.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the district-wide managed print services two-year agreement, or three-year agreement, sorry, with Genesis Technology.
A motion from Mr. Daniels, second, and Mr. Daniels, I need a presentation.
Really, not a presentation, just wanted to see if there was any question in regards to the, to the print management, if there was any additional things that I can provide. We've been using Genesis, and we're going to continue to use Genesis, you know, to the next level, that they're going to help us reduce the cost, the number of prints, print work, like, in light versus color, print work PDF, and then take a look at what the printers are at, and we will help them more, in fact, they're, so, it's a pretty good comparative approach.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. McInnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion here. Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session to request a printed and planning conversations, this can perform to the principal, specific enforcement, cover body, including legal counsel, exception C1. Collective bargaining, exception C2. Litigation, exception C11. Purchasing and use of blue property for the usual cover body, including means, health and purposes of discussion on the particular class parcel should be required, exception C5. The discussion of minutes of meetings, while being closed under the tax, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes, or semi-natural, will be viewed, exception C21. Mr. Daniels made the motion, is Mr. Daniels second? I have a roll call, please. Except Jerry Ryan.